The planning commission meeting, the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 3rd, 2018 is open. Called to order. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of way back in November 6th. So, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? No. Okay. Uh, any announcements?
I have an announcement that... On January 18th, um, at the Hinsdale Town Hall, there will be, it's at 7 o'clock, a public hearing to discuss the bridge replacement, uh, the replacement of two bridges over 119. They're gonna open up the town offices at 6:30 so that people can inspect the plans. Otherwise, you can make an appointment to go to Concord, New Hampshire. But I think I've also found some of them online, so, anyway, uh, so that's-
And what do you think, has there been any progress?
I don't-
Not in a meaningful way, no.
And our problem is also with the state of Vermont, correct?
It continues to be, yeah.
The points you found online, is that something you can share with the group?
Sure, I can send you, there's like a page that New Hampshire DOT has set up.
That'd be great.
It's not-
It's not completely-
They had applied for a Tiger grant, I think, recently, so there's some information with that, but it's not like a full set of engineered plans. It's still kind of conceptually looking, so they may have something different that they reveal at this meeting.
Is the town responding to either state in any sort of organized way, like the town manager?
We need final screening and some field position, um, and in addition, we've made it clear to B-Trans that, um, that the proposed arrangement, the arrangement proposed by B-Trans, which is that the roughly 700-foot length of the bridge that lies between 142, Route 142, and the actual border with New Hampshire, so it's about, you know, it's just above the high water mark, that's about 700 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, B-Trans proposal was that the town would maintain that, including the area of snow, and the town has made a formal response, saying that under the circumstances, um, they are declining to take up that portion of road because it doesn't service any other street in Brattleboro, so it connects a state highway to a state highway. And the turned-on the drive, it could get, that's sort of the standoff. I've not heard any follow-up on whether B-Trans is gonna either A, accept responsibility in maintaining that 700 feet, or B, um, change their mind with regard to the property that lies underneath, they can beneath the bridge, which is the old tank farm on the shores of the Connecticut River.
So the maintenance is an issue, the old tank farm is an issue, and the old bridge is an issue.
Yes. Wasn't there also an issue with pedestrian and bicycle access, or was that working for you?
Yes, um-
I think it was gonna, we had wanted to buy the old bridge or something.
That, that's a little, resolved is the wrong word, but it's, the outcome is, I think, clearer. The state of New Hampshire basically controls the old bridge, and their view is that when they're done building the new bridge, which they're financially and, and, you know, project-wise responsible for the construction of, um, their intention was to hand over ownership of the old bridge to both the town of Hinsdale and the town of Brattleboro. And, um, both towns kind of complained and said, "We don't have any money for this, like, what do you think? And, you know, unless you set up a fund or something so that we can help maintain it, we're not interested in having it. We'd rather have it knocked down." Um, and that was supposed to be the bike-ped alternate route-
Right.
-so that you didn't have to mix it up with vehicles on the new bridge. It also turns out, and I haven't heard the resolution of this, but my understanding is that under existing federal requirements, you cannot, you cannot use federal funds to build a new bridge that does not make accommodations for cyclists and pedestrians.
Well, that's pretty clear.
So, but then you get this double, so then that's why the state of New Hampshire and the state of Vermont are completely uninterested in helping either the town of Hinsdale or the town of Brattleboro maintain the new bridge, because they're like, "We fixed our bike-ped problem. See ya later." Right? Um-
And are Hinsdale and Brattleboro working together?
Somewhat.
That's nice.
Yep. Yep. I think that, I think the committee has been the local committee made up of representatives, state representatives in New Hampshire and local select board in New Hampshire and others, and then state representatives in Vermont and select board and local representatives in Brattleboro. Yeah, they don't necessarily see eye to eye on everything, but it's an effective committee, and it's processed a whole bunch of decisions fairly effectively, and being able to communicate with both state transportation and maintenance effectively.
There's another bike-ped issue where the friends of the West River Trail would really like some sort of, um, right-of-way so that they can get further south on 142, so, kind of-
Or some out there.
Um, no, it would actually go to, you know, the old Georgia Pacific Building. If they wanna get over there, there's an old railroad truss. I think they, they would like some better right-of-way kind of through this bridge area to-
Right. And there's an existing building that is almost on the property boundary between the tank farm, it's on the tank farm property, but it's almost on the edge of the railroad property. And so, not quite wide enough for a human being to pass between the wall of the building and the edge and the property owners, so there are fence there and there. And so the question would be, how and if you could figure out a path for a bike-ped path to extend the trail. And so there was a meeting there, I wanna say in late November, there was no snow on the ground. Um, maybe before Thanksgiving.
It was before my Brownfields grant was due, so, yeah.
Okay.
Beginning of November.
So, at that, at that meeting, there were New Hampshire State Highway Department representatives and B-Trans and town officials and property owners and representatives of the Friends of West River Trail. And so that was one of the things that that meeting looked at, and then the other thing that that meeting made clear was that there was gonna be, um, an environmental, was it an environment? And I'm sure the woman from B-Trans, it wasn't an environmental, but they were gonna review the whole question of the impact of the project on that property, on the tank farm property. And they were hiring consultants to do that, and so we got-
So it's an environmental assessment?
Yeah, so I'm not sure yet, we've not heard who the consultant was.
It must've been an environmental assessment, because wasn't the point that they did an environmental assessment when they evaluated the alternatives, but they actually didn't do one specific to this preferred alternative, I don't, I could be wrong.
Yeah, they may have to wait until next semester.
Well, I'm not sure it's, I don't think it's an environmental site assessment where they're testing, I think it's more the environmental.
History. Right.
Different type of review.
Yeah, I don't think, we've not heard who the consultant or they retained us, but that was, that was the major announcement of B-Trans at the time, right?
Yes, I thought, yeah, or feasibility studies on the tanks and-
Right, because one of the questions that they had was, the project calls for moving some of the tanks, but not all the tanks, and so their question was, is it feasible to move just some of the tanks, and how would you go about doing that and what the impact would be? So, it's in some ways less clear than it was before, but-
Would they be taking the whole property, but only moving part of the tanks, or just taking part of the-
I think that's not clear yet.
That's the part that's problematic, the, the-
And they call that an alternative? They don't know what they're doing?
It's a popular one with B-Trans.
Okay.
Should we don't know what we're doing, alternative?
To be determined.
Yeah.
Which is why I was intrigued by this meeting on the 18th, because-
Right.
I'm not really sure.
And the meeting is in Hinsdale, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Alrighty, any more announcements?
Not as good as that one. Not as good as that one.
Uh, there's no public for a public comment. We're going to not discuss the Brownfield program this evening, get to that at another meeting. So let's discuss the draft downtown designation renewal application.
So, um, we have the designated downtown, and that's, um, that's good for five years. The, there are many benefits that come with it, including, uh, the ability to get state historic tax credits for commercial buildings, for SOT improvement tax credits, code improvement tax credits, um, technology tax credits, there's some priority consideration for state grants-
There's nothing in our packet about this, correct?
No. Sorry, I did, I did send you the application, but I didn't print you off copies because it is draft and it was like fifty-some odd pages, so-
Does the, does the tax bill that passed still allow for downtown tax credits and all those?
These are state tax credits.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Just wondering.
It is a good question. Yeah. My understanding that there are certain federal tax credits that are at least preserved for two years, what happens after that, I'm not sure, certain ones got preserved, others, I'm, I'm not so sure about-
Bad exclamation.
Yeah. Anyway, so we've been working on pulling together the application, it'll be going before the select board, I think, in February, it might first appear on their agenda in January. The DBA Downtown Brattleboro Alliance is the downtown kind of organization that kind of-
Is it any different from previous years?
The application?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I've paid a data, I don't think this is-
Anything that we should know?
I mean, it's the same as last year.
Yeah. Downtown's still downtown.
Still there.
Can I speak up? So I'm very, uh, interested in starting the dialogue of expanding the downtown parameters and exploring that, if everyone obviously is into the idea. You look really worried right now. Um, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm new at this, I don't really know what I'm doing, but my focus is business and the vibrancy of the business community in Brattleboro, and I know it'd be kind of minuscule and not very substantial to expanding, you know, like considering like exit one to exit three, out to exit two, you know, would be, you know, kind of awesome and be kind of like throwing, you know, a very small bone to businesses in Brattleboro.
Doesn't it depend on census district, census tracts?
But, no, because there's only two census tracts full of Brattleboro.
Oh, I just, I thought this designation was some sort of poverty statistics and stuff.
No.
No.
No, this is like the Main Street, the Federal Four Point Approach Main Street program. So, yeah, we've kind of talked about this, I think, um-
I think we heard that the exercise will be all had to draw math before we thought this downtown-
What we thought was downtown.
Yeah.
We did that, we did that.
That was fun.
So for this particular program by the state-
Yeah.
Um, they have, over the years, been pretty, they're, they're looking to keep it really tight, so, and they define a downtown as the traditional central business district of community.
Yep.
Who's they, the DBA?
State.
No, the state, Department of Housing, yeah.
I'd love to explore the idea, though, of expanding it beyond just the big buildings we have down there, you know, especially to like, my understanding of business right now is it's extremely difficult in Brattleboro, um, and my personal experience, and especially the uncertainties and unknowns of taxes and stuff in the future, like anything we can do for businesses in Brattleboro, even no matter how minuscule or small that this seems to be, like it could be a very beneficial thing to people, you know, especially small businesses, especially people that like feel left out or alone, or like if you're not in the club of downtown, um, then, you know, it could be, it could be helpful, it could be a nice thing to do.
Well, the club of downtown is kind of a mixed sword, too, because then it's also an additional taxing for them, right? They have to contribute to-
Yep, there's a special assessment on, okay, let me back it up, so you don't have to have a special assessment and an extra tax on downtowns, one of the ways Brattleboro achieves and maintains its membership of the downtown program is-
Yep.
-is to actually assess a special tax on downtown buildings.
Yep.
And then that money basically is operating budget, annual operating budget for the downtown organization which promotes downtown.
Yeah, yep.
So, in expansion, one of the, one of the barriers to expanding it, obviously, is convincing people who are not paying that special tax to-
To wanna pay that, yeah.
Right?
What does that look like? What is that tax?
It's not, it's not huge, but it-
Like 1% or point?
No, it's more, it's more of a multiple, it's not huge, but it's not inconsequential.
Yeah, gotcha. Well, so what are the benefits of being, falling in the parameters of being a downtown business?
You can get, um, buildings in, and this gets back to the original kind of purpose and why there's a, if you like, a geographical limit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you can attract historic tax credits for the restoration and renovation of buildings in the Brooks House, is a perfect example of-
Yeah.
-a big, you know, big use of those resources.
This building could probably fall into that, too.
It's not a commercial building, I don't think we'd-
It could just fall.
Yeah, it could just fall.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, so, so that's one of the major benefits, and then you get, um, a higher ranking and review for other state-based grant programs, so for things like sidewalk improvement or a whole bunch of other things, we do better compared to if we didn't have a designated downtown and a downtown organization.
Yep.
You know, it's, so that improves our access to state grant funds-
Okay.
-for improvements. We discussed the boundaries of the downtown district as part of the 2013 town plan, and it came up a little bit in the land use regulation discussion, and it came up, Dick DeGray, when he was on the select board, also was interested in reviewing the boundary limits.
Yep.
The advice we took from the state the last time around, and ironically, it doesn't seem to me like that long ago, but obviously I'm getting really old because it was the last time we did this, um, five years ago.
Yep.
It's not the ideal time to discuss a boundary change when you're going for a re-up of the designation itself.
Okay.
So what I'd say is, if there was community interest, public interest in-
Yep.
-reviewing the boundaries-
Yep.
-that's a good conversation to have, and I think it's worth exploring.
Yep.
This is not the year for it, because, you know, you've got this thing hanging in the balance, and everyone likes the whole thing to be deeply packaged and, you know, be questions.
Yep.
And so, it's sort of a-
The state.
Yeah.
Also, what I would say, I mean, when we were looking at expanding the boundary, it was kind of to bring it up to the common, like Linden Street and the, a lot of the office buildings, the old historic buildings that kind of sit across the street from the common workplace.
I already included those. What's the name of that?
Here is the map. I was gonna show. So, and I can tell you, I mean, not with 100%, because I don't sit on the board, but I don't think that we could make an argument to bring it up Canal Street, so they're really looking at the-
Which board?
The downtown, state downtown board. They're really looking at compact-
Right.
-walkable, the built form.
Okay.
So these are obviously the brick, multi-story buildings, they want smart growth, so they would definitely look at Putney Road as strippy, and they're probably gonna look at Canal Street, even though it's like an older, like, area pre-91. I honestly, I don't think this downtown program would be the right one.
I can see that, I can see that argument, absolutely, like, I, you know, I totally understand that, I just wanted to explore the idea of throwing it out to them to seeing, you know, because most downtowns are, you know, like downtowns of actual cities are the size of Brattleboro completely.
I mean, they push-
You know, and so it seems that like, you know, going up Putney Road and then down Canal Street, even-
But I think, you know, I think to address your point, I think, you know, we had a study number years ago, I don't remember, of all the downtown, all, all the commercial districts.
Yeah.
And I think what you want to do is maybe to emphasize your commercial district that isn't necessarily the downtown, or to strengthen that.
Exactly, not just mine, too, by the way, all commercial, you know, Putney Road including, yes, it is very strip mall-y, but, yeah, it is-
So I think we've, we've had discussions where we've discussed the commercial districts that are not the downtown, we've had studies about them, we had a big Putney Road study, and then this other study that studied all the other commercial districts, which maybe you'd like to see, maybe fish them out. But now, but when we did all that, we didn't do downtown, and now we're gonna focus on doing a master plan of the downtown, so, well, you're not, weren't aware of that, so you might feel slighted, but-
Yeah, I don't really-
You have to take advantage, that's just the way I'm expressing, you just have to understand that there's this whole history that we started on the other commercial areas first, and are now going back to the traditional downtown.
So there's this other program that I think I had mentioned at some point, it's the Neighborhood Development Area.
Yes, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, and that is one that is designed to be within a half a mile of the downtown district. The benefits there are exemption from Act 250 regulations, which for us isn't a huge one necessarily, certain projects for sure, like Red Clover Commons did hit, did hit that, the hospital would, that kind of stuff. And, um, and land gain taxes, eligible for once designated, reduced A&R review fees, so that must be water sewer, those kind of permitting fees. So, we had looked at it around the time Red Clover Commons was interested, and we had, there were some challenges to actually making it work, because our topography is a bit challenging and doesn't necessarily make their nice definitions of what they're looking for.
We were literally less than, you know, sort of like, imagine that you've got something like, it's pretty much like SimCity, so you should-
Basically, exactly like SimCity.
It's basically like SimCity, except you're playing with real beginners, so not like a 12-year-old girl.
Yep.
They're just gonna clean this whole thing up.
Yep.
So, you gotta, I mean, because, you know, Brattleboro's on the Connecticut River, and then that's New Hampshire, right?
Yeah.
So it's not like the downtown is in the middle of a perfect cir, circle with concentric circles of development evenly distributed around, right?
Yeah.
Which is the ideal.
Yeah.
So we got a credit for the area that's in the floodplain downtown, and we got a credit for the Connecticut River, because their model runs on some kind of, literally, a circle.
Yep.
With a river through it.
There is a river running through, right?
Yep.
But we were literally like two blocks short of getting it, and eligibility for a neighborhood development area at exit one.
Yep.
And they weren't open to stretching the rules. It was pretty much like, you know, like playing with a nine-year-old, like, nope, it says right here.
Yeah. So you're saying that, that opportunity isn't really an opportunity?
Well, I mean, at that time, it wasn't anything that we pursued.
It wasn't, that was like three years ago, when the program was pretty new.
Yep.
Um, it's worth, it's worth exploring, and then the thing that we've done since then is the new land use regulations are in place, which identifies the Canal Street area as a neighborhood center.
And also West Brattleboro.
West Brattleboro, and then also, kind of, for want of a better term, Lower Putney Road, so that area around Top of the Hill Grill.
Yeah.
Um, back, set towards, towards downtown, as far as, almost as the, as the bridge, right?
Yeah.
As another neighborhood center.
Yep.
So, what I'd say is that as far as the land use controls and stuff that we've got in place, encouraging multi-use development in businesses and so forth in those places, that's in place. What the town hasn't done is really match up any kind of financial resources to support existing businesses or to boost business location in those, in those locations, and that's something that-
Maybe there's grants for that or something like that.
We should, I mean, I think the town in itself needs to look at that, and I think that we should consider grant opportunities to support that as well.
And thanks for saying that, I really appreciate it, and I, I see that it says 10 minutes for-
Oh, no, 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 that's okay, that's just, that's an estimate, it's just an estimate.
I just wanna say that at that, that area north of, by the bridge on Putney Road, there's a mannequin on one of those machines.
I know, it's freaking out.
And I once, I drove by several times realizing, did they sell those machines there, or is it a workout place, do they sell the machines?
They sell machines.
In the window?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, I came to work one morning, and I'm like, somebody's working out, and then I left work, and I'm like, somebody's stolen a-
She's stolen a mannequin.
And then I realized, wait, that's a mannequin.
I'm like, oh god, this person's died, and-
They just propped her up.
Because at some point, you know, I went past and she was upright, the mannequin was upright, and then the next day, it was like slumped by a step. Not a good event.
Somebody's New Year's resolutions have already fallen by the wayside.
Yeah, that's right, exactly.
Um, no, so, I just wanted to open the discussion, and I'm still learning, as we all, we all understand, and it does make me feel better to know that we have explored it. Has there been any other public input from other businesses curious about joining the downtown?
No.
No, nothing at all, no emails or anything, so how do we-
No, but it might be really helpful for you to look at that study that we talked about, the other commercial areas, because I thought that was a really good study.
Yeah, I mean, that was pretty much public improvements, recognizing that at that time, there wasn't gonna be some massive, you know, redevelopment going on.
Like, I feel like one of my whole points of being in this room right now is my, the focus on business, you know, and like in Brattleboro, I'm just like concentrating on that, because I'm passionate about it. So, if there's anything that we can explore or do, and anything I can like learn about the downtown district zoning, or whatever it's called, the parameters, and that it falls in, would be awesome.
Yeah, we'll put some stuff together.
Yeah, or exploring other ideas and options for other people.
And even in the, in the master plan, there's a lot about that as well.
Yep, exactly.
And like West Brattleboro, they definitely concentrate their efforts on coalescing the business and-
Yeah, West Brattleboro Association.
Exactly, my whole thing, though, is like, when it comes to like the square miles of Brattleboro is, it's a small town, you know, so it's like, there's, there's cities out there that are 100 times bigger than the entire town of Brattleboro, so why is our small town designation area so tiny, like in literally like three blocks, you know, or I don't know if, how many blocks?
It's an interesting question, I mean-
Three, four, five blocks, you know.
Because that's how those blocks function, and there aren't other blocks that function in that way.
Well, and I think it's the state's attempt to have maybe parity between towns or something by keeping it pretty-
Is there any way then for us just to think about and start exploring of like, including other businesses down Canal Street, up Putney Road, out Western Ave, in downtown alliance functions and stuff like that, you know, just to be, you know, like-
I think, I, I don't think so, because I think, you know, there's the downtown, and then there's other commercial areas, and other commercial areas have their own unique qualities that are just different from the downtown, and I don't think that you'd benefit from the downtown alliance aspects in these other commercial areas, because, you know, what do they do? They, they put up Christmas decorations and stuff like that, which is meaningless for you, you know.
Yeah, and I'm definitely not putting up Christmas decorations.
Right.
But if there's any benefit, I'm just curious about learning about the benefit of, you know, what is, if there's no benefit of being a designated downtown, and why are we doing it in the first place, you know, so there's gotta be some sort of-
No, I think there's benefits for the downtown, but I don't necessarily think there'd be benefits for other commercial areas, and I, I think we can explore what the benefits, what benefits would be available and what you would want to see for auxiliary commercial areas, but it's not the same as the downtown.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question correctly, but I think anybody can be a member of the DBA, I don't think you necessarily have to be downtown.
You can be a friend, or, um, which, you know-
Wouldn't be a voting member.
Some lonely people have decided to be a friend if you get, and, um-
Are you one?
He's ex-officio.
I've been asked that so many times on podcasts.
Your ex-officio.
I'm ex-officio, and emphasis is on the ex. Um, uh, and you can be a property owner and therefore have voting rights and be an automatic member of, of the downtown Alliance.
Um, I think all I'm getting at now that I'm learning much, much more and I appreciate that is that, uh, I think I'm just gonna always be driving home focus on business and I think I'm probably just warning you now, you know. So I thank you for, for listening to me.
I think, I think it's a good question for us to ask about ways in which the town could be more supportive of directing business activity to things like the neighborhood centers.
Yeah, exactly, so directing activity beyond just downtown also, you know, like there's so much focus on downtown and it's, you know, it's awesome and amazing because of the, the, what it creates for a town like Brattleboro. But there's so much more than just downtown, you know, there's a lot more going on out there. So it's, that's what I'm, you know, excited about.
Well, I think, I think too, I'm sure the state would love us to have another designation, so if we can make neighborhood development area work, I think there would be no, you know, they would love that.
Why would they love that, just?
Because they like to see towns use their designation programs, cause they think it makes them look good.
Yep.
Um.
It's back to the SimCity thing.
Yeah.
And so I think, you know.
Which I've never played SimCity, I'm going to now though.
You know, one thing that in the land use chapter, I was asked to add a part about the, kind of the neighborhoods. So maybe, maybe we can add something in there about exploring the neighborhood, um, development area. But then maybe look at like Brad said, and maybe look at some other things as well. Yeah, so no changes, this will be before the select board, you know, in the next coming months before it gets submitted.
Is there a certain deadline that has to be submitted by?
Um, March fourth or fifth somewhere.
March fifth, I think, and then, um, it's on the agenda for.
January sixteenth and then February twentieth.
And then the downtown board meets.
Oh, later in March.
Later in March, so it'll be on, so we'll know by April where we're at.
Okay, so let's review the town plan chapter reviews. Starting with arts and culture.
These are, um, the plan here is to kind of get these before you for a second time, pull together an entire draft, draft. I still have to go back through some of the other chapters, that's my task for the next two weeks. Um, make the edits and then bring a plan before the planning commission in February that you feel comfortable taking to public hearings. So this was really another chance to kind of go through these chapters. Most of these had some little tweaks that needed to be made, for example, um, if we're an arts and culture first, um, we had. It is, yes, yeah.
You gotta take this off.
Yeah. The, I'm, and I apologize, I tried to clean up the formatting, it's not great, I'm still working on it.
Yeah, there were some.
Taking it, yeah, taking it from InDesign into Word and it's just been really.
So when I read this online, there were like cross outs, strikings with, you know.
Yeah.
That just didn't come through printing, but it's not, it's not like different.
If it was a strikeout on your online version, then that was deleted, text to be deleted, so I printed it clean. So in the arts and culture chapter, um, one of the issues the last time we had was the actions not necessarily matching the policies. So I'd kind of reworked those, you should probably re, read through. Um, and then actually Josh, Jess and I had an interesting, Josh had some interesting points and Jess did as well, um, about a part in the chapter.
No, uh, again, all about area and space. Uh, what art, uh, is happening throughout, so it's on the next page.
Yeah, it's on that.
It's not broken down, it's bullet pointed.
The flip side, yeah.
Where art is happening throughout Brattleboro, there are three concepts where there are higher concentrations of art downtown Cotton Mill Hill, uh, and West Brattleboro Village, so then there's downtown Cotton Mill and West Brattleboro. Just trying to think of a way to consolidate this whole paragraph or this whole thing into like maybe just like one sentence of, um, the entire area being a vibrant arts hub or all inclusive.
The town as a whole.
Yeah, instead of bullet pointing downtown Cotton Mill and West Brattleboro.
I think we should just combine those three locations.
Yep.
Well, actually, I'm not sure.
While saying all of the town and also.
Right, I'm not sure about the second one anymore, I mean.
Well, so. That's kind of the, one of the conversations we were having.
My, my issue with the Cotton Mill is it's owned by the BDCC, which, uh, they're, they seem to be taking on like a new direction of where they're going with their programming and their mission, I'm not really sure, it's extremely confusing to me. Uh, but I do know that they're currently kicking people out of the building, especially artists. And so that's why I'm like, you know, kind of erring on the side of caution of like including them because one of the ideas for us is attracting people to the area and I don't wanna be deceiving or misleading for any purposes. So it's like trying to figure out a way to exclude that just because of the uncertainties, you know, or unknowns of.
I think while the month Jazz Center is located there, you could always make an argument that it's like some little outlier of artsy activity.
Yeah, accessing it though is, is extremely hard, so I don't want people to think that you can just move to Brattleboro.
I must say that it's not just art that has a hard time dealing with space at the Cotton Mill.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issue right now that it's, it would be best to err on the side of caution and I don't want people to assume, you know, that everything's perfect, you know, and it's like, if there's a way, like, there's a ton of potential in the entire town is like kind of what I'm getting at and like pinpointing these little things that are, you know, everything's flawed, you know.
Is the concern one, is there a scale of this is a flaw?
I didn't know they were referring to everybody.
I'm just being so proud of myself, don't eat a cookie, don't eat a cookie. I knew they were getting it.
Organic sugar.
That's really good.
I think, I'm just trying to understand it, so it sounds like, let me recap this and you tell me where I got gone wrong. It sounds like what you're saying is, um, if I were to summarize it more generally, is that calling out a specific, um, facility like the Cotton Mill Hill, uh, is maybe risky because things can change there.
Yeah.
Looking at this being living document.
Exactly.
And I'm wondering if maybe, um, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, I'm wondering if maybe, maybe changing this to be, I, maybe it's too vague, but saying something like Brattleboro has several, um, incubators of, um, art business, because there are others, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe a little smaller, just sort of like trying to describe it in that way.
And there's others popping up.
And there's others, neighborhood, like neighborhood art sales and collectives and so forth.
And like what Br- West Brattleboro is doing, what I, what I, uh, uh, see them doing is really great, you know, and like, you know, they're banding together and creating this thing and it's like really cool, um, for West Brattleboro, you know, and so it's like, this seems like it's really directed at really specific things, downtown Cotton Mill and West Brattleboro, when those, these are all three potentials and possibilities.
You want it more broadly stated.
Yeah, more broad, exactly.
Well, it is also, I mean, Nick has built a building now on Putney Roads, I mean, so it's less.
And Fulk Mar is in West River.
Yeah, so I, I just think.
And like the Stone Church has a bunch of really cool things going on now and so it's like.
I just think it's better to be more general, like not pick out.
Yep.
So we could take all three out and then.
Yeah, you could just take all three out.
Yeah, and have an, have an overall arts boosterism sentence or two.
To speak on what Jessica was saying, she's not here and I can't speak for her. Um, but she is definitely curious and interested in maintaining it just because of, it is still, you know, like the Vermont Jazz Center is still located there, you know, so with common sense, um, it's inclusive of, you know, Cotton Mill. Um, I just err on the side of caution with it just because of, uh,
Well, I'm sure that, I'm sure that Sue will be able to figure something out that threads that needle.
Yeah, I mean, I like the way that you kind of both put it, that there's like little incubators kind of all over the place and if you, i- i- if we're not specific about just three places, hopefully I can give a flavor, cause Jess was even saying in her neighborhood there, you know, there's lots of little arts activities going on. I mean, you see it in the Elliot Street neighborhood too, so.
And the majority of artists I know, uh, actually, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, I'm kind of done.
Me personally, the majority of the artists I know, they actually operate out of their houses, you know, so to be anywhere. Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I, okay, so we can work on that.
I don't know if this informs you guys at all, but I mean, me and a few friends of mine who are in a residence, a house up on Chestnut Street, which is up the hill from downtown, have been working on also trying to create a bit of an artist space, incubator, residence kind of thing.
Exactly.
Um, and we've also been trying to figure out how that fits into the way, whether it's business or nonprofit stuff or cooperative stuff works around here, especially being somewhat removed from downtown or up the hill.
Yep.
It's kind of its own community a little bit, but close enough and sort of.
And it's hard to find your place and it's hard to find someone to talk to you about it because everyone's so busy or concentrating on downtown or whatever that, you know, you're kind of lost or floundering, floundering around, I don't wanna say you're floundering.
We end up, you know, we've been looking for spaces to do stuff like at one eighty Elliot Street.
Yep.
I mean, the fact that Metropolis closed down, means people are also looking for new spots to do music performances and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, so there's definitely sort of a cusp situation right now where people are kind of figuring out the next stage of the movement.
Exactly, and so my thing is like West Brattleboro is doing great, Cotton Mill's doing great, downtown's doing great. Why there's so many other things doing great that it's, we either have to include everyone or, you know, not anybody.
I like brevity, so, I like brevity.
Brevity or, or vagueness, you know, like.
We're also segueing into that conversation we had before, maybe before you were here and, and that I think we'll continue to have, which is about neighborhoods defining themselves and the town to help work with them and support that, because that's just an organic thing that happens with time.
Yep.
And, you know, it's a good thing to be able to support that.
Yep.
All right, so I'll give this a whirl.
Thank you.
Any other comments on that article?
We move to land use. Anyone have any land use comments?
I see some dangling, I feel like it's full of dangling proposition, like twelve point one point four and there's no action.
Well.
It's a dangling proposition.
I was looking at the goals versus the policies and the action and the goals go as far as waterfront, waterfront areas, but the actions discuss, uh, maintaining, uh, industrial uses. So, I don't know, there's A, B, C, and D, there's four goals and there's seven policies. And so I would just like the policies, each, each policy to have a goal.
Oh, you mean you want more goals?
Hey, this is land use, this is it, this is what we're here for.
The policies are really the most meaningful in terms of, like, goals are good for grant writing and, you know, the overall kind of thing. Um, the policies are used a little bit more with Act two fifty stuff, um, so that's why sometimes there are more policies.
But isn't it, isn't it the classic land use policy goal to, to maintain residential neighborhoods? I just don't, I don't, I think they'd throw us out of, out of the master plan school if we didn't have as a land use goal, maintaining Brattleboro's residential neighborhood.
We have it as a policy.
Yeah, but it's not as a goal.
Okay, so it shouldn't be a policy then, it should be a goal.
Oh, well, these other A, B, C, and D are both.
I always have a hard time with goals and policies, I'm not gonna lie.
Well, I'd just like to match, I'm just a matchmaker at heart.
If we upgrade it.
I want both.
A neighborhood-y thing into a goal.
Now, look, look, you, for example, D, increase and improve public access to the waterfront. And then in twelve point five, you have, you know, enhance public access and you, you, you know, you, you have kind of a matching goal and policy.
You wanna see a one-to-one.
So we need one for industri- industrial, okay.
And, and we need one for residential.
Yes, yes.
Seems reasonable.
Um, so I think.
Is there actually water in that container?
Yes.
Can I have some?
You can, um, I probably need to get you a cup.
There's a monk over there.
Yeah, you might wanna check that monk.
Okay, I'm gonna take you up on an organic cookie, thank you.
No, there's cups in the, in there.
We won't tell your kids.
Can I steal one?
Oh.
How old is Ace now, is he in the house?
He must've had a fun holiday.
Okay. So I also added text on the, the neighborhood part, I don't know, um. Under six, uh, on page one twenty-six, maintain the integrity, that's kind of where my little discussion.
One twenty-six.
Before we, before we leave the first page, just on, on the neighborhood one twelve point seven, on page one twenty-seven. I think we, we say two things about community, one about engaging the neighborhood to, um, define its, you know, what it means to be a community and then also like social mind use interaction, sense of community. It, is there anything, um, are we le- are we just, as much as I'm like all four neighborhoods defining ourselves, are we leaving that too open without direction, like is there anything that just at a town level we wanna say is a direction that we wanna tie back to, say, from the land use regulations or something that, you know, we talked about, um, residential character and things we wanted to see happen in residential, is there an opportunity here to tie back to something correct there? Or should we think of it that way? This just occurred to me now, so I didn't.
I would, I would say just that the framing of this is somewhat opportunistic and I think it was written around the time when there was a really active small group attempting to do some landscaping improvements at the exit one.
Hmm, this is actually newer, so I think it comes.
It is.
This is a new.
But this.
This is a new policy.
This, the action?
Hmm, the actions, they're both new, mm-hmm. So it's probably a little bit more out of the work, you know, that's going on with feet.
Yeah, that kind of stuff. I think it's still open in the sense that the town should find ways of supporting, you know, those sort of organic neighborhood groups that, that form that want to do stuff, but don't, I don't know if we've ever had a kind of discussion about how to, in what ways to support them.
Right.
You know, financially or.
Pets on the bag.
Or help, you know, organizationally, you know.
I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit because I'm not sure, like, these actions might not be the best and maybe there's more. I think on page one twenty-six where I talk a little bit more about, like, what are the goals of our land use plan and this is where I talk a little bit more about the residential neighborhoods, I do tie it back to the future land use. Um, talking about the historic development pattern, kind of balancing off high density with.
That was in the spirit of kind of what popped into my mind was, was the tieback to the things in the land use regulations.
So I don't know if that does it enough or.
I, I don't know, I mean, I just, I wondered that just now as I was looking at it. I, I don't have the best sense of how this document is used to you guys.
Well, thoughts that are generated during the meeting are just as valid as thoughts that you may have had before the meeting.
Or just as though.
Well, unless they're being justified real, okay, actually we kind of.
So I, I guess that's. So I, I guess that's, that's accepted, actually, where I was coming from is, you know, if somebody's looking at just the bullet points here and then trying.
Does it connect to text?
Yeah, does it connect to text in here somewhere in a way that gives you like a direction about, I'm applying for this grant? And I can say, here, here it is, right here at the top, like, it's at that level of importance. For example, I'm applying for a grant to get flowers somewhere, and, you know, does it tie back some here to beautify something, you know what I mean? Like, it's just that.
Provide opportunities for.
Yeah, because a lot of people use this for various purposes. It needs to be vague in that great way that planners make vague statements.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at that.
Take it.
All right, no, that's good.
I like the stuff. I also like the.
Oh, yes, I did add that. Rod and I did a presentation in Pittsburgh about the.
Oh, yeah.
Whitestone Charette.
Yeah, it went really well.
Yeah.
That's great.
It was well attended, isn't it? Um, we did it with Dennis, who was the landscape architect.
Oh, that's so nice.
At the Brownfields Conference. Um, Rod and I were talking a little bit about one of the other sections that we're gonna review is the flood resiliency, which is a required plan, um, element by the state. And, um, we, we talked a little bit more about whether it sits in this chapter or a separate. And we're, we're both having trouble, you know, inserting way too much into this chapter because, as Rod said, this was one that served us really well the last time, so we're probably a little attached to it. But I'm thinking a little bit more and more that it perhaps does sit along in the land use chapter. So, um, you, you might see a little, you might see it sitting here the next time as I play around.
Well, look, if you look at the first goal of the land use chapter, it talks about flood. And so does the second goal.
Yeah.
So where do I find that at then?
The flood resilience chapter.
It's a whole different chapter.
Yes, it's in there. It's, it's totally new because it's a new requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you keep turning, it's, um.
And it's not currently in land use?
No, it's five pages. It's not currently, doesn't currently exist, it's totally new.
Is the argument to have it broken out into a separate one?
Which is kind of, because it's new text that has to be added, we just haven't inserted it anywhere yet. And the question is whether to insert it or not, if it's blended in the land use chapter.
And there are a whole bunch of actions.
Right. Right, so it just extends that whole thing at the front of the land use chapter.
Are there land use actions that this new text would lead you to or?
Well, there's definitely this whole. Twelve point two on page one fifteen has a bunch of, actually, and twelve point three are all related to flood hazard.
Yeah, I mean, there's an awful lot in the land use about flooding, so what does this other chapter say that's new?
That's new? Well, it identifies our flood hazards a bit more comprehensively because there's more than just the special flood hazard area and the floodway. Um, there's dams and street flooding and that kind of thing. So I drew from the hazard mitigation plan that we have. I mean, if we did sit this in the land use chapter, I think.
Well, of course, at the very end of land use chapter, you have this special flood hazard area definitions and so forth.
I thought that, I thought I had removed that.
Where's the chapter on bond cyclone resistance?
We could write it on Thursday.
I have a lot to say right now, but we're being recorded, so.
Um. Well, that overlay district, that is an overlay district that we regulate.
You see, that's, see, that's what's clumsy about it.
What's the benefit of having the flood resilience out of land use? Like, is there anything, like, when it comes to FEMA money or anything like that?
No, there's no benefit. It would just be a, you know, an organizational, we add a chapter fourteen or whatever number it is.
Redibility question.
Yeah, it's kind of a reability question.
I mean, it would make the land use chapter kind of long, and it might take it in a little different direction for a couple of pages.
I think you've already, I think you've already gone down that road and made the land use chapter very flood.
Flood-y.
Flood-centric. So it seems like a logical process to tack this on at the end.
Or if you get back and hit it, you know, collect, collect up all the stuff that's floody in the land use chapter and deal with it as part of the.
Well, does this, does the state, does the state want to see its own chapter for flood because they prescribe?
It doesn't need it. It doesn't need to be. They don't.
It doesn't need to be its own chapter.
I like the idea of it being its own chapter, just so that we understand, like, the significance and importance of the, you know, the potentials of it in the future and, you know, what Brattleboro is going through. I like the idea of it just that we're aware that it's in.
I think.
In our minds.
If you, if you, if you have a separate chapter, then you should definitely take some floody things out of the land use because it's kind of heavy. You might even want to lead with, you know, maintaining existing neighborhoods.
Okay, then. So let's, we'll, we'll, you don't have a strong view one way, I don't, how about we, Sue and I'll mess around with it?
I think I need to.
Don't get me wrong, I don't have a strong view. I, I like the idea of it being, or, you know, just the, the flood resilience a whole chapter on it, just as, I think it'd be important to.
It's a big enough issue in Brattleboro.
Yes, exactly, and, yeah.
It's not an insignificant issue.
Yep.
That being said, we'll leave it to your judgment.
Yep.
Sound planning judgment.
Having hard enough time formatting the other stuff.
Now you gotta redo it all.
I think once we've made provision for maintaining existing neighborhoods, it should become clear to us.
I'll, I'll put everything in its rightful place, I'm sure.
No, somehow I'm just having these weird flashes of Mickey's.
Okay, energy, did I miss that?
No, we, energy was a formatting nightmare.
Right, so we, we don't miss it at all.
It's off the table for tonight. Rod did work with.
Yeah, as far as the energy committee and the energy coordinator are concerned, there are reasons why they contend with its contents. And, um, the somewhat separate decision about what a panic organization, Brattleboro, the community should join to maintain, um, a commitment to meeting the Paris support goals has been, has been resolved by the select board, and we're gonna go with the Vermont one that's been spearheaded by, um, Euro, Flyverga, and others.
So we're all for Paris?
Yeah, as long as you don't use any fossil fuels to get there.
Okay.
Okay, how's that? Should make it pretty straightforward. So, yeah, um, so basically, and the comprehensive energy planning, you know, has more ambitious goals than Paris, than the Paris support. So, I, basically by committing to the comprehensive energy plan goals, which we do, we are implicitly also endorsing the goal set out in Paris. Separately, Brattleboro will become a member of the Vermont Climate Change Coalition.
Great.
So that's cool. So that's, and the rest of the chapters consistent with both of those things.
So, Historic and Tenic Resources? Are we already talking about them?
It's a dangling proposition.
How did it jump out at you?
My little semetrical.
I don't think we need one here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight. Okay, this one. This one, there is a new action which is to explore the certified local government status, um, or program, I guess, maybe not status. Um, that is a program. We would need to do a couple of things. It's not much to actually get us to that, to be eligible for that program. And then we would have some funding opportunities opened up to us. With that funding, you could, we could undertake things like, um, structure surveys, historic structure surveys. We could possibly prepare historic district nominations. We could do oral histories. We could do, you know, kind of different projects that would promote Brattleboro's history and historical resources. So, um, that's something we talked about. You went to a presentation on the CLG, you're right.
I did. It was great.
Yeah. Um, there's not too many communities in Vermont that have a CLG at this time, so it could be a good way to.
CLG?
Yeah.
Certified local government.
Certified local.
Sorry, jargon.
So if you're certified local government, then you can have better access to tax credits?
You're certified?
Yeah.
Or not certified?
No, it's a.
It's for historic preservation purposes.
Yes.
Narrowly, yeah. It's, it's just a weird acronym because it sounds like everything, but it's actually, no, only in reference to.
Historic.
Historic preservation goals.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have historic districts.
Yes, we do.
Already, but consider establishing a local historic district.
Okay, so this, this is different. So we have.
Do we get a color or not? I'm just kidding.
I know, right? Those are the fun meetings. We'll get back there. So, we have historic districts. We have four that are on the National Register of Historic Districts. We don't have a local historic district, so under state statute, we could create a local historic district. It may or may not have anything to do with on the state and the national registry. Now, we've been enforcing our historic review overlay district on the existing federal national register districts, so like Downtown, Clark Canal, Horton Homestead, and, um, West Brattleboro Village. So any building that, you know, wants to go undergo an exterior change, or if it's a new building, they're gonna come before this committee that has some, you know, skilled people in landscape architecture, architecture, historic preservation. And they're gonna review the proposal, make recommendations to the DRB. One of the things that has come up is some, some people are uncomfortable with the fact that you've got this federal register and now, or not federal, you've got this nice federal recognition, and now all of a sudden, because they're in that district, we are imposing a local. Yeah, they think that it could chill people's interest in being on, on a national register, you know, where it could just kind of be some ceremonial and pride of place kind of thing. And so it's been recommended that we consider doing our own inventories and figuring out what does the community, what are the structures that the community feels, you know, are important that we should preserve in the way they are. I mean, we've had a couple of cases where there is a contributing structure on the national register, but if you look around the area, everything's been so heavily modified that to hold them to a certain standard is kind of like, it seems a little uncomfortable. So that's why.
And the properties themselves, the property owners themselves have to be comfortable with the designation because it imposes certain standards on them.
Right. And so that's the idea of looking at a local historic district is kind of getting a little bit more public impact rather, or feedback, rather than just imposing some regulations because they're part of a federal historic district.
So it allows, um, to, like, say, uh, let's see if I got that right, it allows, um, people in the local community to have their input on what a locally designated historic district means today, while still giving them the opportunity for some kinds of, um, resources that become available.
Well, we would only really. Designating a local historic district doesn't necessarily bring any resources. The resources would become if we became a certified local government, we'd have access to some funding. Otherwise, it would be the select board deciding to, you know, set aside some funds for a project or that kind of thing.
So, so what does local historic district, sorry, you probably just said.
Local historic district?
Yeah.
Is just.
It, I mean, it, it's, it's a way of focusing attention on a particular neighborhood, but it, in and of itself, brings not state nor federal resources to the, to the name, to that area. Either in the process of mapping it and doing the necessary research to establish its historic identity or improving it, or, it's just, um, I think it's for communities who are interested in commemorating a particular neighborhood because of some, you know, some significance or strong, you know, like ethnic community, you know, a neighborhood that's strongly related to a particular ethnic group, if I might, so I'm thinking.
But I think it's Swedville.
Yeah, right.
Do, do you know Swedville?
I was just gonna say Swedville. So Swedville is of little significance or importance to very many people, even outside of Swedville, which is all of like ten houses, maybe, a bit more. But, you know, the history of Swedville is interesting in the context of the SD organ factory and all that kind of stuff, right? It probably wouldn't rise to the level of being able to get state level or federal level recognition that this is a historical significant district, but if it gives that neighborhood an identity and then people want to participate in programs and activities around celebrating Swedville, that's cool, you know?
Or because the people that are there in the community really cares about the Swedville area, and, you know, there is some, still some interesting architecture, then we could apply the historic resource overlay district to it. And use that instead of, you know, there, there are some buildings in the Clark Canal district, and we had looked at one that was heavily modified, but it still had to come through the process. If you, if you had been really looking at that district, you, today, you know, back in nineteen eighty when that was, that district came about, maybe it was contributing, maybe now it's like. Not really so much, so, gives like a fresh set of, you know, the townspeople a chance to kind of look at the area and decide if it's historically important, significant.
Yeah, I guess what I would want to say is, most of the time we focus on these things. You know, because we think they're important, but the step that we take about designation or whatever, the, the decision to go for designation or recognition in some way is often to access state or federal resources. But I think in this instance, there's plenty of other reasons and other ways in which as a community we can celebrate the, the history of particular neighborhoods or even individual structures.
And weren't you saying too, though, that if you had a local designation, then you'd get local buy-in to the federal process? Now you're imposing things on things that have federal designation without having local buy-in?
Right.
Yeah.
It's a way of, it's a way of, yeah, the sort of, um, obtaining, identifying locally, locally interesting things that could then
And local interest in historic preservation.
And broaden out the conversation about historic preservation.
It's a bit confusing.
Yeah.
All right, we done? That's my management style.
Can I ask another question?
Take your time.
Um, we've heard a lot about the, um, this is in my bag, but we've heard a lot about the, um, the, um, native people in this area and their art historic resources related. Is that talked about enough, like, in the cultural chapter previously, or does it need a little time back here?
There is a, if I recall, there is a brief mention. On the page opposite, the, the first page with, with the goals, policies, and actions, at the very bottom, starts with an abundance of water resources and productive soils.
I'm sure he has a. I think I probably do too. I think I've emailed him before.
And our next meeting will be?
I think it's February fifth. It's the first Monday.
February fifth.
Do you want to give me a date for that?
I don't have my.
I couldn't do that.
We're on the normal count.
Yeah, the first Monday.
That's always good.
At the library or?
Yes, at the library.
That'd be in the library.
At five thirty.
Yes.
And so that is Monday, February the fifth.
Groovy.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second your motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
I am.
Can you tell me what time it is, please?
What time is it now?
Yeah.
What time is it now?
Six fifty-five.
Six fifty-five. You can even have time to go to the lecture at the library if you want.
What's the lecture?
I've forgotten.
Is that why we're not there or?
That's an endorsement.
She didn't think she was gonna be out, so she didn't pay close attention.
So, hey, you got a key for your car?
I do, isn't that amazing?
That's great.
Yeah.
It was so funny, I told Lachlan, and even before I finished saying, he goes, it's gotta be in the car.
Yeah. And Tom found it like under the seat, you know? And now, my car, you know, when you go near it with the key, it opens.
Have you been there yet?
Yeah, because you were Marrow.
Yeah, I was at Marlboro College before that.
I know a bunch of people from Marlboro.
Oh, cool.
Adam Weinberg or.
I've heard of him, yeah.
Max Barcdale.
I've heard of him too.
Okay.
Marlboro people are awesome people.
Yeah, for sure. It's a great space for collaboration.
Yeah.